All right, we're going to open our meeting and we're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, a longstanding tradition of our schools that reflect a collective commitment to education, community, and civic responsibility. We invite those who wish to participate to please stand, face the flag, and join in reciting the pledge. Participants is voluntary and respectfully welcomed. As a sign of courtesy, please remove any hats and place your right hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we have some recognitions this evening.
I'll get there.
Okay. Going a little fast, sorry.
So, our presentation tonight is the 2025 National FFA Agri-science Fair Qualifiers, Lucy Conger and Isabel Morris. For all high school students, Lucy Conger and Isabel Morris have once again qualified for the National FFA Agri-science Fair, earning recognition in the Social Sciences Division. This meeting, they will present their research project examining leadership perceptions among juniors and seniors in the RALA Agriculture Department. The Board of Education is proud to recognize Lucy and Isabel's achievement and their continued excellence in agricultural research and leadership. They will represent RALA at the National FFA Convention and Expo held October 29th through November 1st in Indianapolis, Indiana.
Awesome. You guys want to come up and give your presentation?
And my name is Lucy Conger, and we are so excited to be here for the second year in a row. It's great to see you all, a lot of familiar faces. So, we did our social science project this year on leadership identity perceptions in our own RALA FFA chapter. So, we studied our upperclassmen and we found some really interesting results that we're so excited to share with you tonight.
So, first of all, leadership identity is how a individual wishes to be viewed by others and how they view themselves as a leader. This is important as a strong leadership identity leads to impactful and successful leadership. The biggest importance of leadership identity is that it moves the focus from accomplishing tasks and individual rewards to growing themselves and growing others. In order to measure leadership identity, we use the LID model, which was developed in a study in around 2005. It has six stages, and the idea is that individuals move through these six stages as they develop as a leader. Some of the earlier stages include awareness and exploration, which are common among children who are first aware that there are leaders and then explore what being a leader is. The third and fourth stage is what we're really working towards in extracurricular organizations, where the individual begins to see a leader and then want to become a leader. And then the fifth and sixth stage are pretty rare among individuals, but that is where they learn to inspire others and leadership becomes a part of their identity.
So, we looked into a lot of different studies that actually happened in our home state. So, one happened at the University of Missouri, and they used the LID model, interviewed a bunch of their undergraduate students, and found that there was a gap between the expectation of the workforce and the level of leadership identity you need in the workforce and what was being provided in the clubs and activities and organizations that these students were involved in. So, seeing that there was this gap and seeing that the LID model can show how leadership is developing these students, we decided to apply this to our own home chapter. So, the purpose of this study was to describe how involvement in the National FFA organization at a chapter level would affect a student's leadership identity development. And by collecting data on this, we can see how effective these student-led organizations are at building these future leaders and preparing them for the workforce or for the industry that they are looking towards. So, we started by picking the students we wanted to survey. And this was kind of a hard thing because we, at first, we were like, let's do all of them. Well, you can't really survey everyone every time, and we can't do it definitely on a state level because that's just so many people, and we needed to make this something that we could relate to our home chapter. So, we decided to survey our upperclassmen of the Agriculture Department. And so, this involved 41 students, and we had 38 of them respond, and those, that difference in the numbers was just due to absence on the day we sent out the survey. So, we decided to use this entire population, so we didn't have to do a simple random sample or anything, so it was the entire population. And then, these students were given the survey through Google Classroom on a Google Sheet-like survey, and so, they were familiar with this process because they'd used Google Classroom, and it was sent out through there, so they're familiar with it. And then, they were also told it wasn't for a grade, so it was completely voluntary, and the students completed it after being told what it was for, and so, they were already informed of what it was for and how it was going to be used. And then, we took the survey research and then analyzed it further. So, we got our reliability and validity from just gathering all of this, we studied what reliability and validity meant for our experiment, and we applied it. So, validity is the extent to which an instrument measured what it claimed to measure. And so, we achieved this through face validity, which was having an expert in the field look over it, and they told us to add a descriptive title to the survey, change a couple of questions on the survey, give it a couple more options for answers, and then make a completely different section for demographic questions and to move that section towards the end. And then, we achieved reliability through each of the three models we used to develop our survey. The one is previously mentioned, the LID model. The second one is a dissertation survey from Pennsylvania University, and then the third is a survey from St. Norbert College. And so, we combined all of these to form our survey that we thought would best represent the LID model, but with questions that are easy enough for our upperclassmen to understand and best answer. We put these questions on a Likert scale from strongly disagree to strongly agree, one to five.
All right. With our survey, you'll notice there's quite a few questions and there's quite a few demographic questions, so there was a lot of data analyzed. So, we're just going to highlight some of the most interesting results we found. So, the first one was the participants' belief in the statement, "I am a leader." This is a key part of the leadership identity model, so it was definitely a question we wanted to ask. One of the most interesting things we found was that participants were most divided on their level of agreeance with the statement based on their post-graduation plans, with those planning to work and/or go to a college/university agreeing, while those planning to go to a trade school, military, or other were neutral or disagreed that they would consider themselves a leader. Another interesting question we asked for them to write was, "I am a role model to others." This was mostly divided among their level of involvement in the chapter, with those being more involved, agreeing more strongly, and those being less involved, not agreeing. Across the board, most of our participants said that skills and abilities for leadership could be developed, which is definitely a good thing, as that's what we hope to do, is develop those skills. We also asked them to write the belief that one's formal position determines whether they are a leader, and while overall they did disagree slightly, it was very close to neutral, so we knew that that was a point we would want to change and work towards showing our members that being a leader doesn't mean you necessarily have a position, and that just because someone has a position does not mean they're better at leadership or they are above the members.
So, another interesting thing we found is one of the demographic questions, because we surveyed our juniors and seniors, was, "Are you a junior, are you a senior?" And then, we analyzed the data based off of just those, just that demographic question. And we found that the results were almost the same for both juniors and seniors, which we were like, okay, well, why is that? Why are they the same? And so, our theory on that is because we combine our junior and senior classes in the Ag Department, and so, they learn together and they work together, and they kind of develop at the same time because they're learning the same things in the same environment. So, that was one of the cool things that we have a little theory on.
So, with all this results and all this knowledge, what can we do with it? This past year, we are both officers, so this current year that we just started, we've been trying to promote some of those ideas about leadership that we hope for our chapter members to gain. For example, does leadership depend on having a formal position? As officers this year, we've tried to make ourselves more accessible to our members so that they can get to know us more on a personal level, and they can see how they can become a leader, and they can see how we are just one of them.
And then, on the national level with the National FFA organization, another thing we recommend is the, National Organization does a good job of providing these leadership experiences for the students, but they aren't necessarily gauging whether these experiences are pushing these students further in their leadership development. So, one thing that they can do at the national level is maybe come up with a generalized survey to give out at the end of events that they hold, leadership development, career development events that they hold, and to see how the students feel after the event, before the event, and things like that. And I think the more data we get on this, the more importance we can put on these events that specifically target that leadership development, which overall prepares students for leading in the workforce. I think we're it. So, thank you so much for listening to us tonight.
Yes.
Do we have any questions?
Of course.
Yes.
Now, first of all, thank you. Very impressive, ladies. I would tell you, the proposal and the paper and things that you put together, I didn't do till grad school, so kudos to you.
Absolutely.
That's impressive. My question is kind of, is probably kind of silly, but I'm going to ask it anyway. So, I remember your presentation last year. This is very different. So, what led you down this path?
So, I'm going to give my answer, and Isabel can tell you what she thinks about it. But, so, last year, we did an animal science project where we studied the goats and rumin health and anthemetics, and it was really fun, and we really enjoyed it. And so, the problem is, is when you win at the state level, you can't do that same category again, and we wanted to do another partner project, so we're like, what category can we do something in? We don't really want to do food science, we don't really want to do plant science. Like, so, we're trying to come up with an idea, and our friend was doing a research paper in English class, and she was like, hey, this model thing I found is really cool, happened to be the LID model. And so, I'm looking into it, and I'm going, okay, I could do something with this. So, that was really cool. But, there was definitely a lot of challenges in social science versus animal science, where animal science, we used a lot of hard data, like numbers, and so, this, we had to use a Likert scale to convert feelings to numbers, which is definitely something that we hadn't worked with before.
Yeah, so I think Lucy described it pretty well. Gave most of the story. I was definitely skeptical about doing a social science because I am very hard sciences, I want my numbers, but as we looked into the scales and as we worked on developing our survey, I was like, okay, we can make this work. And at the end of the day, I really like it because I think it's helped me as a leader figure out what are the areas that I'm weaker in, and I think it'll help me help others as well, so.
Very good, very nicely done.
Very good. Are you guys going to work with Dr. Chapman to create a leadership program for the eighth graders?
Yes.
Yeah, so actually...
That's a great idea. He laughs.
That is one thing we discussed within our Ag Department, is whether or not we could create some sort of curriculum, whether it's like a semester class or a full-year class that really works on targeting these leadership skills, like speaking in front of people and coming up with that confidence, because those are key skills that I really think our members would benefit from, and so, we definitely did talk about maybe forming a class like that in the future.
Outstanding.
I can really see that you two are getting more and more comfortable in presenting, and so, that's your leadership growth, and that's, you guys are amazing.
So, I'll give you a challenge, and that's to figure out how to take those students that aren't going to go on in education and go to the workforce, and still on them that they need to develop their leadership skills also, because they may not always want to just be a trade person. They may want to lead that trade organization, and I'm sure they'll be capable of it, and they'll want those skills.
Yes, I would agree. Yes, so, we did a practice interview yesterday with some professors at, up at Mizzou, and one of them proposed that we could take this to the state officers to talk to them about this, just so that they're aware of how the leadership model works and how people visit in cyclic, in a cyclic manner, and then, maybe they can then use that when they go out to chapters and use it for their own work.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Best of luck at Nationals, too.
Yes, definitely.
Mr. Jenkins, Mr. Stockcell, you guys have anything you'd like to say?
It's hard to follow that, so be careful, Ben.
You have to, yeah, have to come to the mic.
Yeah, I would just say, we are, I would just say that we're very, very proud of these young ladies. As you've noted, they did a hard science last year, and now, being able to switch over to social science, which, with such grace and, you know, the ability to just take that research and talk to people and let them understand what goes on. We appreciate your time to allow them to practice. Their national interview is the 23rd of September. We won't find out anything until National Convention onstage there at the end of October, 1st of November, and up until the 23rd, they are going to keep practicing. We're going to schedule that state officer presentation so that they can talk with the Missouri Association. So, thank you for your time. They, like I say, they are dynamite girls, and we're very lucky to have them, so.
Good job.
And both seniors, right?
They are. And we have some young ones who are very interested, so I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful that this meeting will have several presentations in the future of other students that have got some state-winning agri-science projects, so.
Excellent. Let's get a photo.
Can I give one back to you?
Yes.
It's a reflection of what's going on in that classroom. Very good reflection of that.
You're so articulate. Very impressive.
Thank you.
Stella's taking a walk there.
Hop over. Yeah.
Yeah, what are their plans after high, yeah, what's, what are your plans?
Sue's asking what their plans after high school are.
Do you know where yet, where you're going to go?
I'm applying to Mizzou.
Great.
Awesome.
Very good, we're so proud of you.
Thank you.
Good job, ladies. Hey, ladies, when you make it to your master's level, you know, and beyond, you've got the basis for it.
That's right.
You need work.
We could use you on the climate and culture survey also.
There you go.
If you love data, I've got data.
You love data. We have some data.
We do.
Yes, thank you so much for coming.
Bye, thank you.
Good job, guys.
All right, we'll move on to questions from the floor. At this time, any person wishing to speak on any question previously discussed through administrative channels and not on the agenda will be granted three minutes to make a presentation to the board. Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations on agenda items. Any person wishing to speak on any items on the agenda will be granted three minutes to make a presentation. Again, seeing no one, we'll move on to consent agenda. A consent agenda is utilized by the RALA Board of Education as a means of dealing with routine matters, which must be considered by the Board of Education but require minimum of discussion. All Board of Education members receive and review written information supporting the items listed on the consent agenda while in advance of the meeting. While any Board of Education member is welcome to remove any item from the consent agenda for separate consideration or discussion for any reason, normally, all items on the consent agenda are approved in one motion with a minimum of discussion. Tonight, we have items A through D. Is there anything we need to pull out and discuss?
I think all that's pretty straightforward, happy to answer any questions.
All right, does anybody have any questions? If not, can I get a motion then to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, items A through D.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion's passed. All right, moving on to old business, we have our long-range facility update, and I assume you'll also be doing the storm recovery right after that.
Good evening, everyone. I did not get very creative, so you're going to see what you saw last week, but it's also some pretty, pretty good information with a few updates. So, starting off with auditorium, we are still working on punch list items. We have crews coming in in the next two weeks to finish up some punch list items, so we can finish that up with just some little things, some drywall fixes and anything else that they have identified that needs fixed up. That's way out of my realm, so we have a nice, long list. So, we talked before about maintenance summer projects, just a review of what Patrick and his crew did. Again, thank you to our maintenance crew for all of the hard work. They did some really great work as we went through. Just a reminder that we are working on the plans for the Phelps County Community Foundation Early Childhood Center. Dr. Dare and I have been meeting with the architects again and talking about some, some more plans and things that are moving forward. It's, it's pretty exciting to get to this point. So, the timeline, right now, we had told you that it would go out to bid today. It did not, so right now, it is moved back to the 17th, due some, just due to some changes and things that we needed to make. So, right now, again, that is tentative. I would just like to say it is tentative, that is, that could change again if something else goes, goes on, because we have so many hands in that, so. Athletic field updates, we did get Musco here to tech, to check the lighting at the softball field. Those lights are working, so that is very good news. I have sent that report on to our architects. All of that had to be in before we could put the softball field out for an RFP, because we needed to know if things were working in it. So, we know they're working, it's back with the, with the electrical engineers right now, so they're moving forward with that. Again, no movement on the, on the turf replacement yet, but that is all going out for RFP on the 12th, so that is slated to move forward. With the bids coming in on the 10th, looking with a notice to proceed in November with final inspection still due in April, so we'll be bringing those to you in October. Okay? Questions?
So, with the lighting at the softball field being okay, is there any issues with still converting it to be a softball, baseball field?
There's no issues with that, other than we are, we have to bid it as no as a grass field, because we need that number for insurance, and then, we'll look at alternates, for making it a combined baseball field, and then, we will also look at the possibility of turf, but I'm not sure what that will look like.
And then, for the, for the lighting part, for the baseball, does this require more lights?
Oh, it's just more?
More lights.
Okay, those lights, they don't have to be...
Those can stay.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay. Okay. In the tornado recovery, I will just tell you, all of these pictures are the same ones we had before, but they were so memorable, we're just going to use them again. There was nothing new to put, and I'm like, what do I do? So, again, with Mark Twain, working on the final plans, we sent in some more kitchen changes this week in regards to some layout in the kitchens that Mrs. Kraft wanted, our director of the cafeteria. So, we are working on planning to make that cafeteria a storm shelter as well. The timeline will be 18 to 24 months. There's a picture of Mark Twain of just where we were and five months later. This is a picture of the rendering of the storm shelter itself. This is what the face will be facing Salem Avenue whenever we do all of, whenever we replace the windows in there. It'll update and modernize that very well. And this is a picture of the possible future project of the infill, that is where the old cafeteria was, converting that to classrooms. Future project question, because that will be up to, up to you as a group to decide. Again, this didn't, this timeline did not change with drawings being issued for bid on October 16th, coming back November 13th, with notice to proceed in December with a 12-month project time. Wyman, I know there have been questions in regards to Wyman. This has not changed. We are still waiting on guttering, so in my update today with blackjack roofing, they are looking at approximately three weeks before they can get a company here to work on the gutters, not only at Wyman but at middle school. So, whenever we get there, just know it'll be three weeks. Whenever we bring them here, we'll bring them here to do all of the above gutters. It's going to be a little bit more tricky at Wyman, just because we are, we have to put gutters on the front of the building and we have school, so they are working very closely with Patrick to schedule all of that. We'll put all of the safety pieces in. Also, I am waiting to hear on delivery of the playground equipment. It should be coming in any day now.
Really?
So, waiting on that date.
That's great.
Yeah. Any questions? Okay, there's a picture of what Wyman was and where it is today, and it's only, it's even better, there's lots of decorations in the hall and bright smiling faces in the classrooms. And the middle school, again, the roof is repaired, again, waiting on the gutters. The HVAC units, I do have an update there, which is very nice to hear today. I got an email this morning in that six of the 17 units are in shipping, which is really good news, and the others are on the line to be completed yesterday, so, and then, they head to testing. So, if they all test well, they should be shipping around 9:08, so we're hoping to do that. When the units, the units that are in shipping right now will stay, will stay at maintenance, then we will move them all and put them on the roof on a Saturday when kids are not in the building. We can set them all in one bill, in one, one day, so that is good news. And pictures of the middle school?
Those new units get new warranties too, right?
Correct. Correct. Again, with the softball complex, again, that is going out in the RFP. We're going to issue both the football field and the softball field at the same time. And again, that drawing with them going out the 12th, due back approximately the 10th, with notice to proceed again in November, final inspection in, after that, in April. Questions about any of those? Okay, thank you.
Okay, next we have summer school update. Dr. Welch.
Just press the middle button, it'll be fine.
Oh, this is a different one. All right, this looks easier, this looks like more my speed. Okay, so, just very brief summer school update. Obviously, we've completed that, and to share out some overall details in regards to how our summer programming went, we had some new faces this year. Dr. Gwen Fleming was leading the charge for that middle-level student. Thankfully, she has Ginger Thompson, who basically could probably run the whole show, and so, she's a great mentor and just partner with all the planning. And then, Dr. Stephanie Grisham was a new administrator, leading the efforts at the high school, again, with Josh Smith leading the virtual side of things and Jamie Mesa assisting. And then, Rob, Paige, and Hannah were returning faces for those elementary folks, and all of those individuals did an excellent job just in the preparation and planning. Once summer school actually gets started, it's a pretty easy day-to-day. If you don't know, it's really the, the work that occurs prior to summer school happening that is just time-intensive. There's a lot of processes that are very manual, because we're in the middle of a current school year, and so, we have to do things a little bit different in terms of our enrollment and some of those different pieces, but truly, just this awesome team comes together and they take care of all of those details to make sure we have a fantastic summer program. We had similar options in terms of our programming this year. Every year, it varies a little bit in terms of the types of courses that we have, that really is driven by our teachers and their availability interest, what they propose that they would like to teach, especially when it comes to those enrichment courses. But again, we had just a robust offering of different things for students to choose from, lots of enrichment choices. We also provide those remediation courses for students, and then, any required students that might have special services, minutes that need to be served over the summer, we provide those services for those students, and applicable transportation services. At the high school, of course, that's not enrichment at all, it's truly just looking at courses that students can take to earn credits, and so, a little bit of a different program. Dr. Grisham had some questions, ideas about how to do things differently this year. We've seen our numbers, in the past, we've had a morning session and an afternoon session, and so, those numbers in the afternoon for seated classes have really declined since COVID, and a lot of that has to do with just more virtual options becoming available and that just becoming more of a preferred learning format in the summer. I think especially for those high school kids, it gives them a lot of flexibility. Many of them are working jobs, or they're doing, you know, other activities, and since it is for its credit... at courses that students can take to earn credits, and so a little bit of a different program. Dr. Grisham had some questions, ideas about how to do things differently this year. We've seen our numbers, in the past, we've had a morning session and an afternoon session. And so those numbers in the afternoon for seated classes have really declined since COVID, and a lot of that has to do with just more virtual options becoming available, and that just becoming more of a preferred learning format in the summer. I think especially for those high school kids, it gives them a lot of flexibility. Many of them are working jobs, or they're doing, you know, other activities. And since it is for its credit-bearing, their attendance has more of an impact than those elementary kiddos who are participating in enrichment courses. So we'll look at attendance later, but she proposed that we do away with that seated option in the afternoon and just have virtual options in the afternoon with only seated courses in the morning. And so we did put out a survey to our staff and to students, just to kind of get their input, asked some questions to try to determine if that would matter to them in terms of their participation, and really kind of didn't get anything that was alarming to us in that feedback, that made us think we shouldn't pursue that as an option. So we tried it, and actually, it went really well. Our enrollment numbers were up just a little bit at the high school, but pretty comparable with what we've had in past years. And so all in all, it was very, very well-received, and I think teachers appreciated that as well. Just gives them more flexibility, too. Sometimes it's a little difficult to find folks that want to stay all day and teach all day. That's one of the perks of that summer programming, is you can teach in the morning and then still have some time in the afternoon to have your personal time. So, as you know, this was our second year with utilizing some different facilities at the elementary level. We're in year two of a three-year rotation, is our plan, at the elementary, and part of that was to help, just allow buildings opportunities to do some of that more deep cleaning and projects that sometimes are a little bit difficult to do when you have a building full of kiddos. And so we'll have one more year at Truman next year, and then we will rotate that where that's taking place, and we'll make all that communication with parents when we make that change. And then we were also, in year two, of having our middle-level services provided out of the junior high, and that wasn't necessarily by choice, but because of the tornado and work that was happening there, we went ahead and chose to move that programming there. Again, we had the year prior moved it due to all of the HVAC work that was going on, so year two just kind of felt like old business. Everybody slipped right in, and that was an easy transition as well. So we're thankful to have multiple facilities that we can use and meet our needs. Our goal would be next year, though, to move back to the middle school for that middle-level programming, primarily because they have a playground, if we're honest. So we get creative at the junior high and we make it work, but we don't have that equipment, and we would like to have that for summer school. So our goal will be to move back there next year, providing all things are moving smoothly and not creating other issues in facilities. So, for our enrollment, we were approximately, again, around 1,400 students. It varies in terms of which building those numbers are at. So last year, we probably had more numbers, more students participated at Truman and fewer numbers at the Raleigh Junior High. This year, that kind of flip-flopped, and that was mainly based on the teachers who applied and what their proposed courses were. So all in all, it was about the same number of students that participated. And then the high school numbers are always a little more challenging to calculate, because we have our total students who participate, but those kiddos have more options in terms of the classes that they take. So that second section over there kind of gives you a more detailed breakdown. Again, you can see how many students were participating in seated courses versus those virtual enrollments, section counts, but overall, just total enrollments in both our June and July session. And again, the high school is the only grade configuration that offers a July session, and it is virtual only.
So what are they taking in virtual mostly? Are they taking algebra?
Yeah, so for those core content classes like algebra, typically, that's only offered as a credit recovery during the month of June, but we do offer personal finance, government, PE, classes like that, that students can take in a virtual and a seated format in both of those sections.
Okay. Are we still doing driver's ed?
We are, yes. Very popular option, yes. We made it through the summer without any tires bouncing off of curbs, so that was good. But no, it's a very popular option, and we have instructors who are very passionate about that and feel like that's a really important part of what they do, and preparing those kiddos to be safe drivers. So it's a lot of fun. We usually have good stories to tell coming out of driver's ed. A little bit about our attendance numbers. So our kiddos that participate, obviously, I mentioned earlier, those high school students, they are earning credit, and so they are certainly more committed to being at summer school each day. Their completion of those virtual classes, that's calculated a little bit different, but you can see our attendance at the high school is very strong in the summer months. And then those students that are K-8, where it's more enrichment-type activities, a lot of times, they will have days where they're vacationing with family, and we work around that. So our attendance is always a little lower in those two buildings, but overall, good attendance. And then our financial summary, Kendra always calculates this for me and shares this information, but again, this was fairly comparable with where we were last year in terms of our overall revenues and expenditures for summer school, just a little over $350,000. Every year, I remind you, our goal is not to make money in summer school, but certainly, we want to make sure that we're not overspending there either. The bulk of our expenditures go towards our salary and benefits for staff that participate in that, and then, of course, we have just supplies that we purchase in order to operate, fuel, food, just the typical business of doing school. We have made some changes in the last two years in particular for some of our courses, if they are utilizing food, because those costs have gone up so much, they just simply can't maintain the same level of budget that we've given them in the past and really go out and purchase enough to make that work for those classes. So we have had to increase some of those budgets along the way. But overall, very successful session. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Great information. All right, moving on now to our budget update with Mrs. Atkinson. She'll give us an update on the FY '25-'26 budget.
Okay, no presentation this evening, just go over some data. So since July 1st, I have updated our beginning FY '26 balances with the ending FY '25 balances. I say the same thing every year. So as a reminder from the ASBR report from last board meeting, we ended FY '25 with an operating surplus of just under $1.7 million. That's after transferring $2 million to the Capital Projects Fund, and then resulted in an ending fund balance of 38.57%. So included in FY '25 operating balance, to Mr. Packard's point from last meeting, I do want to point out that $455,000 in net insurance recovery was deposited there. So that is insurance money that was advanced to the school district to preclude any cash flow issues during the tornado recovery. So a portion of it was deposited there. In the Capital Projects Fund, we have an ending fund balance of FY '25 of $11.1 million. That is inclusive of $1.3 million in net insurance recovery. So in my next budget adjustment, when I've had time to go through all of our tornado expenditures and everything, I will actually budget for an equal amount of expenditures in operating and the Capital Projects Fund. Those are not budgeted yet. During your work session here in a couple of weeks, that is in the projections. It's just not within our financial system yet, okay?
Okay.
Okay. So when you start looking at those balances for future planning, it is included there. Okay, so for other adjustments for this year, I always start the year with truing up federal programs, special ed grant funding, current tech ed grant funding with our new allocations. So we have carryover and all these things. So we have new allocations, updated allocations, so the budget has been updated for those. Those tend to change just a little bit over the next month or two as well, as things get finalized with the Department of Education. There'll be more of those to come. Some other things to point out, I did under-budget by almost $200,000 in operating for the carryover amount. I was not anticipating having that much that was not expended in the last fiscal year, so the buildings all get a carryover amount. That's been added to the budget now. So we'll look a little more closely at that at the end of this year, so it's not had that happen again. Also, just under $48,000 has been added to the budget for the new transportation software. I had a misunderstanding with how much needed to be budgeted this year as compared to last year and when things were being paid for. Then $1.4 million gift revenue from the Phelps County Community Foundation, that was in the budget last year. We haven't received that gift money just yet. I do know that it will be more than that. At the time of this, I did it like on July 2nd. I didn't know how much, so 1.4, same as last year. Once we actually do finally receive that grant or that gift money, I'll just do a budget adjustment for that remaining amount, and it'll true up. And then $172,000 had to be added to the Capital Projects budget for this year, because we ordered a bus last year, and it was in last year's budget. We have yet to receive that bus. We received, I think it was two?
Two, and we have one more.
Two, and we have one more still to receive. That just has to come out of this year's budget, so that's been added. And then various other capital project items that were ordered last year. So again, purchase orders were last year. It was in last year's budget. We were still waiting on those items, so they had to then in turn be budgeted yet again in this year's budget. So those are some of the big-ticket items that affected our budget for these updates. So we originally budgeted for 23.32% ending fund balance. We're now, after updating the beginning balances and these adjustments, budgeting for 28.16%. As a reminder, our floor is 17%, so... That was just a lot of words. Any questions?
All right. Anybody else? All right. You need a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the budget amendments as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Yes, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, say no.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Fulton, climate and culture update.
Well, good evening. Finally get to bring the climate and culture report back to you. Seems like it's been a long time coming, but we have been working through a lot with this, with the new program that we're using. It has been very beneficial and sometimes a little challenging, but it's okay. I would like to do a shout-out to the committee members that are there. We have some great parents and some community members that are serving with us, and I'd like to give a shout-out to Ms. Hurley and to Mr. Haven and Kelly Tate. We appreciate their dedication to us, and I would also like to give a shout-out to Kristy Dalton and Keith Strossner, who came off the committee due to moving out of the area, both of them did. So appreciate their time and effort in this work as well. So again, our climate and culture is a big piece of our continuous school improvement program. The committee expectations were this, that they review the multiple data points and create a list of recommendations to address school climate and feedback to you. These recommendations will be shared publicly, so survey participants can ensure they have been heard and the district is taking action to improve the RPS climate and culture year over year. Again, we used Qualtrics, and thank you for allowing us to use that program. The Qualtrics program is a confidential survey, and we do send out the QR code, but they actually run the program. It was interesting in that one teacher goes, "I hit the button and I need to look at what I did." Nope, not happening. So I think that got around. We do not know who has responded, so we know the percentage of people, but we don't know who they are. And that is very important to our staff and to us. Again, the survey window was April 15th through May 16th, so we left it open a month. I would like to remind you, that was a month after the tornado. Might have skewed right to...
Might have had some other things on the month.
Might have, definitely, definitely with that. We, or the committee, put the survey into these four categories: a positive school climate, safety in facilities, academic competence, and communication. So we took all of the questions and we put them into those four areas. One of the complaints is that the survey took too long. I think our staff had 40 questions. It was narrowed down significantly. Okay? The response rate from '22-'23 to '24-'25 is on the table in front of you. We kept thinking, oh my gosh, it isn't quite where we want it. And I'll be honest, in the student responses, it is not where I want it to be. We created a survey that would go for kindergarten, K-3 we added this year, as well as, we made it through 1/6 then and then 7/12. It's not quite where I want it to be yet, but it was the first year with this new type of a survey, with the teachers reading that survey to the young ones. So we're going to get there. That's one of our goals. Staff rate, while I wasn't happy with 346, when I looked at this, it's a lot better than 114 from the year before, so very pleased with that. Again, everybody was in survival mode at that moment, so we have to...
Was this the first year we used Qualtrics?
It is.
Okay. I couldn't remember if we did it last year, too.
And look at the number of parents and families that participated.
It's great.
That is a great number, and I also attribute that to Gina and Parents Square. We reached more people that way. And then our community numbers, you know, 73 out of 140, and that could fluctuate. But last year, '23-'24 is the first year that we had pushed that out. So within that, there is a QR code for you to look at those survey results. Would you please click that link real quick for me up at the very top? These results go live on our website tomorrow morning. This is what everyone will see. And so if you would click on positive school climate, now I'm going to go through some of these for you, but this is a preview of what everyone will be able to see. They will be able to dive into this data. Aha, there it is, right there. If you click respondents, if you click on that, you will be able to see all of the different categories that took the survey. If you click over to school, and it will show you all of the buildings in the district that were surveyed. Once you do those two things, you can narrow down the data. And so within that, if you click and you hover over one of the responses there, Amy, right there, you can see that you can see a breakdown in numbers, so you just hover over it. There is also a filter button on each of those categories as well, all the way through the survey. So this will allow our staff and students, if they would like, and our community, to look at this data. Questions about that piece? Okay. If you would, go back to the presentation, please.
Hold that there for just a second. He wants to get the QR code. Did you get it?
I think I might have or might not have.
Okay.
You can get it off the screen.
Yeah, it's on there.
Okay, I'll get it off.
Yeah, okay. All right, if you go then.
Yeah, I did it.
Okay, I'm good. So the committee met, and they went over all of the data, and these are some of the strengths that come out of here. Now, I was going to put like three or four. They felt all of these were important for you, so we're going over them all, okay? These were things they were very, very proud of. And so with this, they said, "87% of our students feel they are treated with respect by adults at my school." That was an increase of over 15% from '23 and '24. That is a very nice improvement. 89% of the families feel they are treated with respect by adults at the school, an increase of over 10%. And 89% of the students feel they can do well in school. It was 70.69% in '23-'24 and 64.02% in '22-'23. With 90% of the students said they participate in class, which is an increase of over, right at 12% from '23-'24, and a larger gain from '22-'23. The team wanted you to know that they believe this is a correlation. When our parents and students feel they are respected, they're going to do better in school. They made that correlation, and they wanted me to share that with you. And if you look at 84% of our staff members identified that educator teams address positive classroom learning environments. Again, that is up from 76% in '22-'23 and 82.8% in '23- '24. That is quite the gain in two years. 80% of our families feel that effective channels are in place for parents and communities to communicate with school and provide input when needed. That is up from 72.6% in '23- '24 and up from 75% in '22-'23. 84% of our staff feel there are open channels of communication between staff and supervisors. That is a 5% increase. 92% of our families feel that Parents Square is a helpful communication tool. Again, that is a new question. And 85% of our families feel that we prepare students for the next grade level or life after high school. That is a new question. We felt both of those were important, to know what our parents feel about what we are doing. Any questions about those strengths? The last slide is 84% of our families say their child feels safe at school, while 81% of our students say they feel safe in school. Keep in mind, we took this in April. I think that is a very, very good kudos to our staff and our schools, whereas in '23-'24, 71%. The one that kind of threw me off is 77% of our community agreed they are physically safe in school. Again, we... Again, we have to remember, we moved kids out of a building and, you know, at that point, Mark Twain is sitting there with no cafeteria. So not sure why the difference there, but it's, it's a pretty stagnant, stagnant response. Recommendations from the committee. They want to increase survey participation. Not sure what percentage we want to go up. We know we need to increase it at the, at the student level especially. We would all like for all of the others to go up as well. So we will look at, at a percentage that we want that to go up. Positive, under the category of positive school climate, 77% of the staff believes that the buildings positively recognize and acknowledges staff achievements, which is a decrease from 85.4% in 2324. I will let you know that the central office advisory committee along with Mrs. Erboss, we have created a most valuable bulldog program that will recognize any staff member for six out of the nine months. Is that correct? We're starting in September. So within that, they will be nominated, there will be a, someone recognized, either support staff or certified staff at every building every month. From that, all of the names will be taken out. The committee will choose a district member of the, you know, district person of the month. And we will make a big deal. We will go to their rooms, we will recognize them. So it's going, we hope it will change that number. That was already in play before we got this survey results, so. Survey results indicate that 71% of the students and 64% of the families feel that student voices are heard. In this, I recommend, this is a new question, but I will recommend that we strengthen the opportunities for students and families' voices to be meaningfully heard and respected through our decision-making processes, which is part of our CSIP goal, is to have students and parents as part of that. But we also want for them to, to feel that. Apparently they're not feeling like they're, they are being heard, or at least having decision-making process with that. Questions on those? The climate and culture results, I know that seems like a weird term, but we wanted to know if that our families and our staff know where to find these results. And 59% of the families and 42% of the community members and 67% of staff reported they can locate the climate and culture data on the website. So we are going to do some education on those, on how to find those numbers and, and where to go for those. Especially now that it will be easy for them to look at and to dig into and to disaggregate themselves. They'll be able to dig into that piece. So we want to educate them with that. And communication channels. 58% of the community feels there are effective communication channels to communicate with the school and provide input when needed. And we again, want to create clear navigation and communication and promotion of how those channels can happen so they feel like they are, have equitable input. When we came to you in January, we brought in that bullying was a concern. That has not changed. Of our, of our data, 60% of students and 81% of families feel that bullying is not a problem. And again, I'm telling you that we're going to address it. And again, it's, it's perception. 51% of students and 75% of families feel that cyberbullying is not a problem. 33% of students and 51% of families feel that verbal bullying is not a problem. So with that, we have a little bit of work to do. So we want to include education around bullying as a pattern, what that definition is, that's what we brought to you last year. We want to take a proactive approach to address bullying through targeted lessons, campaigns, respectful communication. And we want to expand on digital citizenship and online safety to reduce those incidents of cyberbullying.
And with the survey, you're, are you able to narrow those results down to see, you know, which buildings, which age groups?
We are.
Those are more prevalent than?
Correct. The principals have access to this data and they are to dive into it for their buildings. The purpose of this committee is to be very generic and very, very centered, but yes, all of that, you can dive into every question all the way down. And then we also, in, in that same realm with bullying, we want to continue supervision, reporting systems and intervention strategies to sustain low levels of physical bullying, provide staff professional development on recognizing, preventing and responding to all forms of bullying. What the teachers brought up is that you can be in a classroom with all of the kids going on and the kids think you may have heard somebody saying something to them, what they perceive as bullying and what could have been a constructive criticism. And so we really need to work on, on that piece because in what, we also ask which area they felt bullying was going on. The classroom came up. So now the teachers are going, well, what can we do? Why do they feel that way? So it's, it's spurring further conversations within the buildings, which is good. And then create opportunities for student voice, which is what we've talked about before because we all know that we can tell students not to bully. Are they going to listen to the teachers? Some, but they're going to listen to each other better. So they, you know, some of, we're, you know, saying we need to do more of those anti-bullying initiatives that are student-led. Harder to do in elementaries, but much easier to do at the high school and, and middle school and junior high level. And increase communication with, with families about bullying prevention efforts, reporting tools and outcomes. And that's outcomes of what we are doing. They won't know the outcome of a discipline. Correct?
Well, I think, I remember you talking about last year, some, some definitions and some education around what is bullying and not everybody who's mean to you is a, is technically being a bully.
Correct.
That kind of bully.
Because the legal definition is a repeated offense.
Right. It's an ongoing problem.
Uh huh, it is. And again, that is teaching kids what that is and teaching our parents what that is and that legal definition.
Because it's become a bit of a catchphrase, a buzzword.
Absolutely. And that was a concern of the parents as well. And that's why that education needs to go through, through everyone, not only just our parents and our kids, but our, but our community as well. Because there's so much of, well, he bullied me, well, what did he do? Well, he looked at me wrong. Well, was he really looking at you or what was going on? What, what's the basis, the nature behind it? The other part is, is, well, he bullied me. Well, did you tell anyone? The answer is usually no. We can't address what we don't know. We want to address all of the things. We want to help figure it out. We want to help students figure out those pieces and teacher, teachers figure out those pieces. And that's what our committee wants as well. And that's what we're coming in with the recommendations that we will add to our CSIP program. Questions in regards to the climate and culture survey data? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to new business. So we have a staff request from Dr. Fulton.
Backup. Backup, here again.
That's right.
I don't think I printed this one. I can do this one. I haven't. So in any year, as you know, I come back to you and ask for some staff positions based on need. So tonight, I am coming to you and asking for the addition of a para-professional sped para at Truman to meet students' IEP needs. We have several students that have some needs that we need to address. Estimated salary and benefits for that impact is $25,867. Request two comes from transportation. So we have had to need, where we have the need to add a route driver in the afternoon only for that, and it is just PMs only. So we take kids from different schools and the enrollment has been such into the after-school program at S&amp;T that we need somebody just to do that route. We also have a need on our buses in certain routes for behavioral bus aids. At this time, we have a need for one behavioral bus aid in the morning to help the driver and two in the afternoon for two different routes, with a total budget impact of $22,134. Questions about that?
Any questions?
Yes.
Could the AM person also apply for the PM job too?
They can. There are two different buses. So we have 1 AM and then 2 PMs. So one bus only has a need for the afternoon, so it's basically a person and a half. So tonight, I need a recommendation for one sped para-professional at Truman and one PM route driver and behavioral bus aids for 1:00 in the morning and 2:00 in the afternoon.
All right. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll try. I'll make a motion to approve the request for para at Truman and the transportation needs as presented.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion's passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fulton. All right. Now we have Dr. Dare to present the beginning of the 2526 school year.
Okay, just a, just a short summary of kind of where we are and, and off to a rolling start. So we, we always talk about this, our, everything we do is about planning processes and people, and the people being the most important part of that. So we can, we can plan things to the nth degree and we can put processes in place and we can have the best laid plans, but our people are the ones that make it happen. And we have some pretty amazing people. So it truly takes everybody doing their part and we, there's kind of an old saying in the school business, if you can get them to school, feed them and get them home, you've, you've done something. But there's some truth in that. Just the, you know, having nearly 5,000 people on campus every day, first of all, it's people. It doesn't always go perfectly. We don't typically get perfect kids. We don't typically get perfect adults. We get our, our community members and our, our kids. And so it takes everybody doing their part to make it happen and, and everybody pitching in wherever they're needed. So very much appreciative of the staff that we have all the way through and the efforts that they did in, in having a great start. It was kind of, I hate to say this out loud, but it was kind of eerily quiet. We were, we always expect a few hiccups and, and we had a few, of course, but overall, just an incredible start. So can't say enough about our folks. Just a little bit of data for you and, and I would caution you on this, I think I told you this before. I, I wouldn't get too hung up on these numbers. They're fairly accurate, however, these numbers change every day. We do, we do still have a few kids that we're chasing that we, we haven't seen yet, but we don't know where they are either. And just a few things along those lines. So just understand that, that these are not perfect and, and again, they will be different tomorrow and that's okay. But having said that, they're, they're pretty good. So overall, a couple of things I would point out, if you, if you were to go back and look at this data from last year, you're going to see a, a difference at Mark Twain and Wyman with the early childhood numbers. So if you're looking at Mark Twain, you see the 404, that's pre-K through three. And then of that 404, 23 of those students are pre-K. Okay? So the 23 is included in the 404. But if you'll remember, we had two pre-K classrooms at Mark Twain last year and we shifted one of those rooms back to Wyman. So Wyman's pre-K numbers are up quite a bit, Mark Twain's pre-K numbers are down quite a bit, and that's why, we shifted that room. Overall, we have a small kindergarten cohort. Just the world according to Kyle Dare, it's just worth nothing, but if you think back five years, it was COVID. And I think people were being cautious. And so we do have just a, a small kindergarten cohort throughout and that, that's reflected in the numbers. And then high school still has a, a couple of larger classes, so those will be shifting out, but we don't anticipate it being a, a huge difference in the end. So the enrollment is down just slightly. So total currently at 4120. This time last year, we were at 4228, so about 100 kids. But again, we're not too concerned about that. We think it's just the product of the small kindergarten class and a few other little things, so. Questions about any of that before I roll past that? Celebrations. Staffing was incredible this year. I, I would tell you, I think we had more positions filled when school started this year than we've had in many years. And that's a credit to, to the administration and the other staff. The vast majority of our positions and the people coming to apply here apply because of word of mouth. And so our staff are the ones out there saying, hey, you know, I work at Rala Schools and it's a great place, come work with me. And that's, that's what carries. We advertise and we, we recruit, but our people are the ones that usually find us the best people, so. Great, great start to the year, everybody was in. We spent some time with storm recovery, still. Think we'll, we'll continue talking about that for a while, but it was a mad flurry right before school started, getting Wyman set back up, trying to get things situated, even at middle school. Mark Twain's hit the ground running with their cafeteria situation, so still dealing with a little bit of that. I did want to note, I'm going to tell myself here, so I went back and reviewed last year's presentation to see what I said, because honestly, I couldn't remember. And I had a weather bullet in that presentation. I thought, well, what in the world were we talking about last August for weather? So I had to, I had to go back and watch the video, because like, what, what did you say? We actually had an unseasonably cool start to the school year last year. It was in the seventies, lows were in the fifties and it was just noted, everybody was outside a lot and we had a lot of stuff going on. And so who knew that that was going to be the omen for the weather we were going to have all last year? But when school started last year, the weather was great. The weather's been pretty great. I hesitate to say that, but it's actually been pretty good. So hopefully that's not another omen of things to come. Activities, can't stress enough, again, a credit to our staff. If you want to see something going on with kids, you have about five opportunities every night. You can find something, I pretty much guarantee it. But everything's off to a great start and I appreciate everybody's efforts in that and appreciate our students being involved because I think, you know, part of what we heard from Lucy and Isabel is that the kids that are involved and, and that are developing leadership skills, whether they're the president or not, they're still involved in those clubs and organizations and learning teamwork and all the things that go with that life, those life lessons. So I appreciate the kids being involved in something and our staff work really hard to try to encourage that. Communication was good. We were able to have it in the auditorium this year, which was much more, I think our staff appreciated more than the bleachers from last year. But we had a great, great turnout. Of course, putting all the staff in there, it's, it's wonderful to have that space to be able to do that and have the great sound and, and display system that we have there so everybody can be a part of that. Recognize Julie Pratt, high school special, special ed teacher, who was the chamber educator of the year and certainly well deserved. Julie was, not only does incredible things with our kids every day, but was instrumental in getting the Bulldogs Cafe going to get those kids some job skills and again, back to those leadership traits and personalization skills that, that they need for life. So well deserved and that, I know that's a tough decision because I know the caliber of staff that we have, so. All that went really well. We talked a little bit about optimism and, and possibility with our resilience theme and staff chose our resilience theme. We, we had commitment last year, which we kind of chose as our first focus word. We let the staff vote for this one and overwhelmingly, following the tornado, I think the, it made sense. And so we've stressed that resilience is overcoming, but it's also continuing to overcome and maintain. But everyone seemed to be in good spirits with that and we had a great time. Gina gets the best job in the world on the first day or so, her and Hannah both. They get to wander around and take smiley, happy pictures. I have to tell one quick story. I was at Wyman in the car circle and helping a, a pre-K young lady out of the car and she had just giant hair bows. You know, the kids are all dolled up on the first day, but I made a point to say, you know, I really like your hair bows, those are really wonderful. And so she got out of the car, but she didn't go in the building. And so I'm just pretty black and white, so I'm like, let's go in the building. And she's, she's kind of bumping me on the side and it took me, it took me longer than it should have, but I realized that her hair bows matched the hair bows of the Disney princesses on her backpack. And I had not acknowledged the backpack.
That's right. That's very important.
So I had to acknowledge the backpack with the hair bows and then we were good to go. She marched right in like she owned the place, so. But those are always good times. The kids were great. And that, again, I, I can't state enough, is, is credit to our staff because the open house events and things that they do with registrations ahead of time, the kids and parents are super comfortable on that first day. Everybody knows where they're going, they know what to do and it, it makes such a difference for all those kids, so. Right after that, this young man came out and, and this is why I bring this up, because often for open house, they bring all their stuff with them. So they bring their bag and their paper and their pencils, a lot of stuff, and they leave it. And so some of the kids still have all their stuff because they want to carry it with them and, you know, parents are still picking up stuff and, so most of the kids get out of the car with at least a backpack. This kid got out of the car and all he had was an apple and he was not happy that his mom suggested he bring an apple to the teacher. And so there are still some, some, some traditions out there, but he took his apple and I don't know if it ever made it to the teacher or not, but he, he did have it with him, so. I don't know if it ever made it to the teacher or not, but he did have it with him, so. Can't stress enough how incredibly fortunate we are to have the support that we do from our community and the local businesses. So we had, as part of our convocation event, we had a vendor fair, is what we call it, but organizations that came in and set up booths and tables to provide information and giveaways for our staff. We had a lot of staff who appreciate those opportunities, because some of them don't realize some of the services and things that are available to them here in town. But more than anything, I think, just appreciate being seen and being noticed. The Chamber did the new teacher bags, again, that they helped put together. This year, there were four bags. It grows every year. Somewhere along the way, we're going to have to rent pack mules to help those new teachers out of the building. But it's incredible that the organizations and businesses and individuals in town that put things in those bags to welcome our new teachers to the district. So they get coupons and gift cards, and cups, and notepads, and pens, and pencils, and all kinds of things, and it's truly amazing. It's a little overwhelming as a new staff member coming in, because it's just hard to think about how much is there. But it is very appreciated. And we warn all the new teachers very dearly to guard those things, because our staff know what they are, and they will help them sort them out if they give them the opportunity. We did appreciate those that came to the convocation event and set up. They had to bring a door prize. That's one of the things we ask of them to come and for that opportunity to meet with our staff. They bring a value of $100 door prize, and we give those away. We had some very excited winners, Price is Right style. We had some jumping up and down, all kinds of things, so it was a fun time. And again, can't stress enough, the resilience piece, very much seen throughout the district, and everybody has a great attitude coming in. We still have some things happening. As Dr. Fulton pointed out earlier, we're not done, and won't be for a while, but people are finding a way and working around it and making it happen. And so that's the very essence of the resilience. So we're very proud of the start to the school year and all the things happening. Few things coming up. Bulldog Pride Night, of course, happened last Friday. I know some of you were able to make it there. Incredible crowd. The weather, of course, helped. I hate to bring up the weather again, but there I am. Incredible crowd, the game was packed, and so great night at Rala High School. And again, great showing from our community and their support for our staff and students. Homecoming, or, I'm sorry, let me start with Hall of Fame induction. The Hall of Fame inductees have been announced. I didn't bring those with me, and I'm not going to try to do it from memory, so please forgive me for that. But that information is out. That ceremony will be at 2:00 PM on the 4th of October at the high school. They have not decided the exact location, but it will be at the high school, probably the cafeteria or the Performing Arts Center, one or the other. So more information, excuse me, more information on that will be coming soon. Homecoming, since Maria's not here, I'll let the cat out of the bag. So it's a tangled theme around the movie Tangled, A Night Under the Lanterns. So lots of things being planned there. Parade is set to go. It'll be similar to last year, I think exactly the same as last year, same route as last year. More information on that will be coming out, too. So parade is Thursday the 16th, and then the game, of course, on the 17th. Just as a reminder, we had the cancellation from Springfield Catholics, so we picked up Lighthouse Christian, but that'll promise to be a good game. And then the 18th, we have the Marion Gray soiree in our Bulldog era. Little nod to Taylor Swift, I think. That'll be at the Haseman Alumni House. That's always a great time, too. So I encourage you, if you have questions about that, give Gina a shout, and she can hook you up. But we would love to see everyone at that. Lots of reunions happening there, classes and groups. So I'm not sure what I will wear for my Taylor Swift impression, but we'll find out.
I have an '87 jersey you could borrow.
Okay, okay.
You'd like to be in the '87 era.
I probably won't look quite the same in it as others.
That's true.
Yeah.
I don't either.
And with that, happy to take any questions. But we've had a great start to the year, and appreciate the board's support, but really can't say enough about our staff. They made it happen, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on then to comments. Does anyone have anything to share? So I would like to bring up, Charlotte and I have had some discussions, this is also from the past, at being at MSBA and advocacy, and the push to have a relationship with our legislators. And so we would like to put together an advocacy dinner meeting with Tara Peters, and Benny Cook, and Don Mayhew, and hopefully Justin Brown can join us as well. That would have to be a special meeting. So Tara would help arrange that with those legislators for us. We just need to shoot her some dates. So does you guys have any, is there any time that would be good for you guys to have a special meeting in the evening?
Is it possible that maybe one of the Thursdays in between our meetings?
We could do that.
Since we're kind of a Thursday group?
Yeah, just kind of stick to a Thursday.
I mean, I don't know what.
Does that seem to work? Okay.
You think in October?
I think October would probably, if we can fit it in. I know there's a lot going on in October with homecoming, and, let's see, what is our meeting? Do we have one?
If it's Thursday, then I think the 30th.
I'm better later in October.
Later?
Later.
Or first Thursday in November.
So maybe the 30th?
The 30th.
Could be the first option?
Yeah.
Okay. And then what would be a good second date option?
I'd say the first one in November, maybe.
Because when are our November meetings?
Because our meeting is the 13th.
We have the meeting on the 13th, so the 6th.
The 6th, okay.
And the 30th, both of those would be right after we've gotten back from annual conference.
Yes, so you would have some updates.
Yeah, I won't be available for either one of those, but that's fine.
You can zoom in from there, right? Zoom in from there.
Yes. So, no, I actually have talked to Carmel, and we would do it at RTI. Yeah, and she would cater the dinner for us.
MSBA is here, like, double back-to-back, so this one isn't available.
MSBA or TA?
TA.
BA.
BA?
School Board Association?
Yeah, they're having a training here, November 7th, and they're setting up on the 6th.
Okay. I didn't know that.
Yeah, I didn't either. Okay. Is it something that we need to attend?
Yeah, are we supposed to be there?
Okay.
It's one of the new.
New board training?
It's a refresher.
They've never done one here, that's great.
Oh, you know what? We were on the list. I do remember seeing Rala.
That's great.
Okay. But no, this would be at RTI, so, and we just need to coordinate that with. Okay, so I will check with, would you mind checking with Carmel?
I can, yeah.
Of course. And make sure that those two dates would be okay with her before I reach out to Tara.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Just a couple of things. First off, thank you to the board, attending the MSBA Fall Regional Workshop last night in Washington. We had some, discussed some legal updates and potential funding challenges. I think most of that should have been refresher stuff, but it's still good to visit with other boards and administrators and kind of touch base and see how everybody's handling some of those things. So thank you all for attending that. We did receive notice, so you mentioned the fall conference for MSBA in October. We will be presenting at that as a district, so some interest, a lot of interest from area schools, and I would assume other schools across the state, about our tornado response and recovery, and lessons we learned in that process, and how that all went. So we'll be presenting at the conference and sharing that information. And then just want to remind everybody that we do have a Professional Development Day on September the 15th, and so that's, there's no school that day. So as you're looking at your calendars and planning ahead, no school on the 15th. And that's all I have.
Have they provided you with the day and time?
Not a thing. Still working on the schedule is the annoying.
All right. So we want to make sure that we are there to support you as well during that.
Well, we were going to have you, no.
I think at that, I think it'll be great for people to learn about some of the response and the physical things and the, but I think some folks will be interested in what we had to do.
Mm-hmm, I think so, too.
You know, the quick meetings that happened in some of those places, and some of the connection with some of our local, that other meeting that we went to where Tara was, you and I were there with Tara and Rodney Bourne, and some of those community leaders and...
Yeah, I think our approach for that, we'll kind of do it in a timeline format, you know, from the storm as we went forward, and some of the lessons that we've talked about, like, we had payroll to run, and we had no power.
Right.
And then it's not as simple as just putting a generator, we had to have a generator big enough to do it. And some of those lessons, we learned about making copies and just access to things. We learned a lot.
We had such an eager public, and yet we didn't have adjusters here yet to take care of things, so don't move that just yet. I know you want to move the debris, but hold on, you know, there was some...
There were a lot, there were a lot of lessons there, yeah.
Okay, so our next board meeting is September 18th. Don't forget that we do have a work session for that meeting, so it will start at 1:30. And then we will also start our actual meeting for closed session at 4:00, so we can get done in time to go to a football game.
And we'll still do that upstairs or down here?
Yeah, do we want to do that upstairs?
Oh, that's a good question. Yeah, we'll do the work session upstairs. We'll shift if we need to, but I think we'll be fine up there.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
I just wanted to make a comment about last night, and Mike Pratt is a retired, past president of MSBA, longtime board member from Herman. He served on the Board of Directors with Keith Strasner, so that's how far back he goes, so I don't know. And he's been a big proponent for schools in Missouri. He's a retired superintendent or assistant superintendent or principal administrator, I think he was.
Longtime coach.
So it's good to see him. He was our substitute keynote speaker last night, so good to see him. And he's retired from the board in Herman now, so.
Oh, he is.
He's a good go-around, yeah. We won't be seeing as much of him.
Yeah.
He's a man with a lot of knowledge. Interesting location. You know, the technology, what'd they call it, the Technology Center for the School District